Please rise, Pastor.
Will you pray with me? God, we're so thankful for this time of year. It's just a few days until we celebrate with friends and family the birth of your son. And we thank you just for not only the great gifts that we receive and that we give, but that we can remember the greatest gift of all, the gift he gave each one of us on Christmas. But as we stand in this place, God, there's a great burden of leadership, of servant hood, of government. And so I thank you for those that have decided to give their lives in public service. I pray tonight that you would give them guidance and direction and wisdom. They would know how to govern well and how to lead well, and that they would not forget the voices of those who have no voice here tonight, except through them. And so, God, we thank you so much just for the opportunity to live in a country with freedom, where we're free to worship you in public without shame. So I pray, God, that tonight, on this cold and blustery day in December, that we would not just think of ourselves and the good times that we're about to have, but that we would also take time to remember, to pray for, and to provide for those who do not have at this time. So we love you so much, God. Thank you for the freedoms and the lives you've given each one of us. Again, I thank you for this time and pray you would just take control and guide and direct it in your son's precious name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor. Always nice to have you here with us. Before we do the roll call, I need to remind folks that if you have a cellphone or electronic device, that you turn it off completely because even if it's on vibrate, it does give some problem to our sound system here. So we ask that you do that. Thank you. We appreciate it. May we have the roll call, Mrs. Plata?
Mayor Schilling.
Here.
Councilmember Beltramini.
Here.
Fleming.
Here.
Howard-Lack.
Here.
Kirwin.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
And Slater.
Here.
Former president. This evening, we're beginning actually with four wonderful presentations this evening. And our first is, on behalf of the City of Troy Employees Casual for a Cause Program, the Community Affairs Director and his steward is going to present a check in the amount of $1,053 to U.S. Marine Corps Reserves Toys for Tots Program. And thank you for being with us.
It's my pleasure. As you know, the employees, we dress casual on Fridays to raise money, and we did very well for October, or no, September and October. And we raised it for Toys for Tots. And with me is Major Greg Corbett from the United States Marine Corps. And it's my pleasure, he might want to say a little bit about what the Marines do with their money. On behalf of the city, there's $1,053.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, thank you very much. Members of the council and the staff of the council, thank you. It's on behalf of the Marine Corps. It's an honor to be here in the chambers here in Troy. I represent the Marines that are stationed at Selfridge. And they are a good group of Marine Corps officers and Marines who try very hard every day to make a difference within the country and of course overseas. It is also an honor and a privilege to be in the presence of a couple other uniformed brothers of mine. And you see them here in the audience, and I've had the pleasure of talking with them out front. Your donation from the city here is wonderful, and it is a wonderful thing that you decided to donate money to the Marine Corps Toys for Tots Program because it's a wonderful charity and it's a very effective and efficient charity. The monies and toys that are collected within the southeast Michigan area stay within this region, within southeast Michigan. The monies and the toys do not get collected and then distributed throughout the nation. So this money will be very well spent, and it will stay here within this area. The Marine Corps Toys for Tots Program started in 1947, and it took off very rapidly thereafter with the help of individuals like Walt Disney, who designed the Toys for Tots logo. It is an incredible organization that helps young children every Christmas. This last year, we were able to help about 80,000 children within southeast Michigan. This year, we expect, believe it or not, with the economy as it is, to help another additional 10,000, maybe up to 90,000, or even possibly 100,000 children within our region. Our numbers aren't in yet, but we hope that that's the case. But we know it's going to be a very successful season because any time you can give a toy to a child, that's a success. So we thank you very much. Your money will be well spent, as I said, and I take this very happily from you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And yes, please do stay. I'm going to come down to the front for our next presentation. Welcoming home our servicemen and women is always a very special time, but especially during the holiday time. And so it's my pleasure to ask Corporal Eric Nikolski if he will come up, please. And then I will present him with a proclamation, read the proclamation and present it. So if you want to come stand by me. So everybody can see you. Whereas, whenever called upon to defend our nation's security at home or abroad, the men and women who serve in the United States Armed Forces respond immediately, placing this nation's interests above their own. Corporal Eric Nikolski is one such hero. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices made by our military personnel are vital to maintaining America's blessings of freedom and liberty. And whereas the families of those serving in our nation's military make meaningful sacrifices and provide the support, love, and dedication essential to their well-being and service, such as Eric's parents, Lorraine and Bill. Whereas Corporal Eric Nikolski joins the great heritage of the brave warriors serving for freedom around the world in such places as Yorktown and Lexington, Gettysburg and Appomattox, Normandy and the Argonne, Iwo Jima, Okinawa, Seoul, and the Chosin Reservoir, Saigon and Kaysan, and now in places like Fallujah, Kabul, and Baghdad. And now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Troy does hereby proclaim December 21st, 2009, as an official date in the City of Troy, "To most gratefully honor, sincerely appreciate, and wholeheartedly thank Corporal Eric Nikolski, Troy High Graduate Class of 2005, for his three years in the United States Marine Corps, most recently serving in Iraq and Afghanistan. And be it further resolved that the City of Troy encourages citizens, schools, businesses, and the media of the City of Troy to use this occasion to recognize, honor, and show appreciation to Corporal Eric Nikolski for his dedicated service and sacrifice to our nation. Presented this 21st day of December 2009, signed by myself and all the members of council." Thank you and welcome home. Of course, we're going to give him a chance to introduce his family who's here with him. I'm sure that they are very, very proud as they should be. Wonderful to have you here.
It's very humbling to be recognized for something that me and Derek and everybody else who serves just chose to do voluntarily. It's really hard to say how much I appreciate the recognition. And I'll definitely accept this on behalf of all our brothers who weren't able to ever be recognized.
Do you want to tell who's here with you?
Oh, absolutely. My mom, Lorraine, my sister Lisa, my dad Bill, and my brother John.
Very nice. Thank you. And we'd like to call up Corporal Derek Savage. Now, I understand that his cousin, Sergeant Alexander Meyer, from the U.S. Army, has just returned home from Iraq, and this is the first time the family's all been together in years. So would you come up with your cousin? We'd like to catch him up. Whereas, whenever called upon to defend our nation's security at home or abroad, the men and women who serve in the United States Armed Forces respond immediately, placing this nation's interests above their own. Corporal Derek Savage is one such hero. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices made by our military personnel are vital to maintaining America's blessings of freedom and liberty. Whereas the families of those serving in our nation's military make meaningful sacrifices and provide the support, love, and dedication essential to their well-being and service, such as Derek's parents, Tammy and Raymond. And whereas Corporal Derek Savage joins the great heritage of the brave warriors serving for freedom around the world in such places as Yorktown and Lexington, Gettysburg and Appomattox, Normandy and the Argonne, Iwo Jima and Okinawa, Seoul and the Chosin Reservoir, Saigon and Kaysan, and now in places like Fallujah, Kabul, and Baghdad. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Troy does hereby proclaim December 21st, 2009, as an official date of the City of Troy, "To most gratefully honor, sincerely appreciate, and wholeheartedly thank Corporal Derek Savage, Troy High Graduate Class of 2005, for his three years in the United States Marine Corps, most recently serving two tours in Iraq. And be it further resolved that the City of Troy encourages citizens, schools, businesses, and the media of the City of Troy to use this occasion to recognize, honor, and show appreciation to Corporal Derek Savage for his dedicated service and sacrifice to the nation. Presented the 21st day of December 2009, signed by all members of council, and presented to you grateful appreciation. Thank you." Now, besides having your cousin here, I see that you have a lot of people here. So would you like to make some introductions?
I'd like to, my mom, my dad's in Baguio, of course. I got my uncle, aunt, both cousins of California. Uncle Tarlo, Aunt Laurel, both grandparents of both sides of the family, my brothers. They all made it. Of course, my wife Angie is in over there. Yeah, I can't forget her.
Wonderful Christmas. Thank you so much. Thank you. Now, this evening, we have no carryover items, but we do have a public hearing. And it is a zoning ordinance text amendment, ZODA 241, the Establishment of a Zoning Administrator. And Mr. Brent Savinat will present for staff, and then we'll open the public hearing. Good evening.
Good evening. That's a tough act to follow.
Yes.
Excuse me. Well, as we all know, going for something positive like that do have more doom and gloom, I guess. As we all know, the city's undergoing some significant challenges related to the economy of the state of Michigan and as well as the country as a whole. As a result, the city is undertaking some administrative restructuring in an effort to improve efficiencies. As part of the restructuring efforts, the responsibilities related to the zoning ordinance are going to be transferred to the zoning administrator. Now, currently, many of the responsibilities under the zoning ordinance fall under the purview of the building director, as listed in the zoning ordinance. So what this proposed text amendment does is, first of all, establishes the position of zoning administrator, and it clarifies the responsibilities of the zoning administrator, which is basically to administer and enforce the zoning ordinance, including the Board of Zoning Appeals. And I would note that it is standard practice in Michigan for communities to adopt provisions establishing a zoning administrator and defining the responsibilities of the zoning administrator. So this really kind of brings us in line with most communities. The, under the...
Wait just a minute. Does someone have a phone that is, is that in the other room there? Perhaps it's in the other room that it's ringing. Because we'd asked people to turn those off before the meeting.
It wasn't me, Madam Mayor.
I know it wasn't you. I could tell it was coming that direction. And of course, some people did come in after the beginning. So, thank you. Go ahead.
Under the proposed text amendment, the city manager would assign the, would basically designate a staff member to be zoning administrator. And in this instance, at this time, it's anticipated that the Assistant City Manager of Economic Development Services, it's a tough title every time I try to say it, will take over the responsibilities as zoning administrator. And the Planning Department, including the Planning Director, would assist the zoning administrator in his tasks. I do want to stress that a new position will not be, a person will not be hired to be zoning administrator. It's simply shifting responsibility to a person who's already on staff. I would note that a public hearing was held by the Planning Commission on this item on December 15th. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the proposed text amendment. I would also note that there's another item on the agenda this evening. It's item H6, and it's related to amending Chapter 3, which is entitled Administrative Services. Briefly, how they're related, this establishes the zoning administrator position, lays out the responsibilities, and amending Chapter 3 will basically give the zoning administrator the authority to issue citations and write tickets for people that violate the zoning ordinance. And I can answer any questions that you may have.
Council have questions before we move on to the public hearing?
Mayor.
Councilman Howard-Lack?
Yes, is there a problem with the current city functions or structure?
I wouldn't define it as a problem. But this is simply making, taking something that the Building Department is presently responsible for these tasks, they do a great job. But it's basically making, bringing it into the, under the purview of the zoning administrator, bring it into the Planning Department where, with the Planning Department, excuse me, can more efficiently administer the ordinance. The Planning Department is responsible for maintaining the zoning ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance, working with the zoning ordinance on a daily basis. So it does make a lot of sense to have the Planning Department also administer the other provisions that are currently under their purview, as well as enforce the ordinance.
Any other questions from council? I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone that is here on this item wishes to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return it to the council table for a resolution. Councilwoman Kirwin?
Resolved that Choice to counter by amends Articles 22, 23, 28, 41, 42, and 43 of the City of Troy Zoning Ordinance pertaining to the establishment of the position of zoning administrator and assigning the responsibilities of the zoning administrator. To read is written in the proposed Zoning Ordinance Text Amendment, ZODA 241, City Council Public Hearing Draft, as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Do we have a second?
Madam Mayor, I will second if that includes the corrections that were laid on the table. Thank you.
Moved by Councilwoman Kirwin, seconded by Councilwoman Beltramini, with including the corrections that were laid on the table. I call those to the attention of council members. We had received those earlier in an email, so thank you for doing them both ways. Further comments or questions from council? If not, Mrs. Plata, the vote?
Mayor Schilling.
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini.
Yes.
Fleming.
Yes.
Howard-Lack?
No.
Kirwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
And Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our next item is a public comment. And I call to the attention of those who have not been to our meeting lately that the procedure of that is in the agenda. And basically, what it is, is that folks are able to speak for a time of five minutes at this section. And it may be on a postponed item, a regular business item, a consent agenda item, or any other item that is not on the agenda. This is your time to speak on those items. And I will call on those folks who have signed up first. And occasionally, we have someone who comes and wants to speak but didn't sign up. But I'll go in that order. Okay? So we'll begin, and we have Janice Daniels here that wishes to speak.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good morning.
Councilmembers. Your dedication to our servicemen was very heartwarming and much appreciated. Thank you very much for that. I am here again to voice my opposition to a tax increase of any kind on the residents of the City of Troy in a time of economic distress like we haven't seen in most of our lifetimes. And I'm especially adamantly opposed to the brochure that has been prepared for distribution using taxpayer funds to the residents of the City of Troy, that even the Department of State has said that a sensible reader may be left with a distinct impression that the brochure appeals to the area residents to vote yes on the millage. That's extraordinary. I call that propaganda. I don't want to see taxpayers' funds used for propaganda. At the December 7th meeting, there was a wide divergence of opinion as to just what you would do with a no vote. Councilmembers said that, first of all, the brochure was misleading, that in fact, the council has not come to a consensus with regard to what you would do with a no vote. Another council member said that you would be scrambling to find things to cut the budget rather than close all of the important institutions that you have suggested closing out, and then all the way to the side where you are prepared to close the library and the other institutions. With that wide divergence of opinion, I would suggest that maybe you haven't fully done your homework. And in fact, it would be irresponsible to put out a brochure that says definitively what you would do with a yes vote and definitively what you would do with a no vote. So I would suggest that possibly you vote again on whether or not you really want to put that brochure out to the public. Also, at that December 7th meeting, I asked if you would bring a group of citizens in to take a look at the budget with you. I volunteered to be one of those citizens. I haven't received a call yet, but I really would like to help. So I have with me this evening some Freedom of Information Act requests. I would like to know how many city employees are given a taxpayer-funded car and/or taxpayer-funded car allowances in lieu of having a car. I would also like to know what the salary of the city manager is and what the city attorney is, and what their primary pension package looks like, and maybe any secondary pensions that they might have available to them. I would also like copies of all the correspondence, including emails, that have been distributed while you were preparing and developing this informational brochure. And that would include correspondences between the council members, the staff members, the public, and union representatives. With that information, maybe I can spot something else that we could cut to achieve a budget balance. Also, at the December 7th meeting, I brought forward a declaration of intent, where I asked for signatures on your decision to close down the library, the community center, the nature center, and the historic museum. I didn't get any signatures, so I've actually refined my documents. I have specific declarations of intent that I've brought with me based upon comments made at the December 7th meeting. Mayor Schilling, I would like to ask if you would sign this declaration of intent where you said that you are prepared to close down those four great institutions. Congressman Slater? Excuse me, Councilman Slater, maybe in the future. You also said that you looked at the numbers, you looked at the data, and you guessed that you believe that the no vote meant what it said it meant. I just want you to sign here saying that that is what you said, because it is. Councilwoman Kirwin, you said that it would be simpler to close down those four important institutions. I would like to leave these documents with the city clerk and maybe stop by the city hall later on in the week to pick up my documentation and sign declarations of intent. And I would just like to say that the residents of the City of Troy aren't looking for the simplest way to balance the budget. We're looking for the most efficient, the most effective, and the fairest way to balance the budget. And that does not include, at this time, a tax increase. Thank you.
This is Daniels. Would you wait just a moment before you give your items to Mrs. Plata? First of all, we have a regular procedure for requests of FOIAs. And I'm sure that you're aware of that because you indicated that you were a notary at our last meeting. Second thing is, I understand that you filed a complaint with the state, and you read from something that you'd received from the state. However, we have not received anything from the state. I do know from a newspaper article, that I assume is correct, but I don't know that, that the complaint had been denied at the state level. Would you care to comment on that?
Yes, it was denied because the Secretary of State wasn't the proper bureau or agency to determine the suitability or fairness of the words that are used in the brochure. They simply look at violations such as if you said vote yes or vote no. That would be a violation under their purview. It's the Attorney General's office that we would need to appeal to for the fairness or lack thereof of the brochure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vamrath, you wish me to call on you?
No. Those should be turned into the city clerk.
Yes. Thank you.
Will be processed.
Yes, thank you. Mark Havas wishes to speak next. Good evening, Mr. Havas.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. The last time I addressed this council was on November 23rd, 2009. Councilman Howard-Lack, Councilman Beltramini, were not here at this time, but I encourage you to look at the video of my public comments of that time. The last time I came and addressed this council was in regards to the felony taser weapons possession by Richard John Havas, who happens to be my father. Shortly after I addressed this council, I sent an email to the council with copies of these documents and the police reports. I also called Mayor Schilling's office. To date, I have not received a response to my email, nor have I received a callback from Mayor Schilling's office. I have not received any update regarding this case. This is a felony case. I have handed this city and the Troy Police Department this on a silver platter. The statute of the state of Michigan says, "A person who violates this section is guilty..." of a felony punishable by imprisonment for not more than four years or a fine of not more than $2,000 or above." My question to the city council is, why isn't Richard Havas being charged with felony taser weapon possession here in the City of Troy? It's, I'm starting to wonder if it's okay to possess tasers here in the City of Troy because the City of Troy will not do anything to anybody about it. I'm also concerned when I read articles in the newspaper that say the City of Troy Police Department is missing $40,000 and nobody can seem to find it. So it appears that Troy Police Department has more hands in the cookie jar than they do in enforcing the laws of the City of Troy and the state of Michigan. There are two appeals court cases that the city attorney should know about in enforcing the laws of the state of Michigan. Examining the plain language of the statute, where the statute is unambiguous, we presume that the legislature intended the meaning clearly expressed. No further judicial construction is required or permitted, and the statute must be enforced as written. This is People versus Moore, 1999. When a statute is unambiguous, judicial construction is not permitted. People versus McIntyre, 1999. A judge is not free to ignore or circumvent the plain language of a statute because he or she believes it will cause an absurd result. People versus McIntyre also, 1999. So if the appeals court has ruled that judiciary cannot use their discretion in the plain language of a law, why does the Troy Police Department feel that they can use discretion on a felony matter? I can see discretion being used in a civil infraction or a misdemeanor, but this is a felony offense, and I'm asking this Troy City Council, they ask Troy Police Department why it is not doing its job in enforcing the state law and charging Richard Havas with felony taser weapons possession in the City of Troy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Councilman Howard-Lack, you have a question?
Yes, I would like to request from staff, that would be the staff reports to the city attorney and the staff reports the city manager to provide to the city council, a memo addressing this. And the last memo that we had essentially questioned Mr. Havas's lucidity, and I think that that's not really the issue here because the issue is whether or not there was a taser that was turned over to the city and the gentleman who had it was not prosecuted. And I would like to know what is different about that case where, and the gentleman who was at GameStop was required to be arrested and not, he wasn't allowed to turn over his taser. The behavior notwithstanding the charge itself has fallen to possession of a taser in one case and somebody turning it over in another. To the reader, somebody who is simply reading this in the press, it is rather confusing, and I think that regardless of what the answer is, I think that it does require an answer, and I would appreciate that.
The next person who wishes to speak is James Savage.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Council. We have a lot of Savages here tonight.
Yes.
I don't think, to my knowledge, they're not related, but I would be very proud to have corporal Savage as a family member. Okay, I'm going to relate again to my comments at earlier meetings, and I hope that when you've seen the smart buses around town that you have taken notice, how many passengers are on there. At the last three council meetings, I have voiced my opinions and observations on mass transit. It is quite disheartening when I get the feeling that I'm merely being politely tolerated and that as a resident, my opinions are of no account. The transit center is a waste of taxpayer money. The trains will continue to run whether we have the transit center or not. The track is there, the trains are running every day. The transit center will make no difference as to whether people move on that track. So now we find that Congressman Gary Peters has secured federal funds for the project. Well, whoop-de-doo from Mr. Peters. Did he find the money tree that it grows on? Or is he going to put our grandchildren in more debt? Because the state is broke and the federal government is trillions of dollars in debt, so I don't know where the money's going to come from. Somebody sooner or later has to pay the piper. Our city management tells us we are in such deep financial trouble, we may have to lay off police officers, close facilities, et cetera. Yet, we can spend millions of dollars on a transit center that we do not want, we don't need, and we can't afford. You want our city employees to sacrifice. You want our residents to sacrifice with higher taxes and less services. But what are you, our governing body, prepared to do? Poor financial management got us into this mess from Wall Street all the way down. The economic downturn has hit all of us, but we're not all going bankrupt. Most of us are paying our taxes and our bills. Even our laid-off city workers will continue to pay their way because we have lived within our means, and the city did not. Before that ridiculous project that Rochester Road and Big Beaver intersection was started last July, city management knew we were going broke. Council had the chance to stop it and save money, save over, almost $2 million, but they did not. They did not act. And now this council has the chance to stop this wasteful transit, this wasteful transit project. So now is the time for you, the governing body, to step up to the plate, do what previous councils should have done years ago, and stop the waste of taxpayer money. Stop listening to the self-serving consultants and experts who got us into this mess and listen to the residents who you want to bail you out. Thank you.
Thank you. And is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Mr. Witt?
Good evening.
And, Mr. Witt, before you start to speak, could I just remind you to speak in a careful voice when you speak?
Sure.
For council, thank you. We're always open to hearing from the residents.
Okay. Good to hear that. Thank you. Good evening. I'm John Witt, and I am going to speak about the brochure that is being mailed out to residents about the February 23rd tax increase election. Like many other residents, such as Ms. Daniels who spoke before, I find this brochure to be a piece of campaign propaganda that is designed to misinform and scare residents into voting for a 29% $40 million tax increase, and mailing such a brochure is a clear abuse of taxpayer dollars. I want to specifically address the newest piece of information added to this brochure. This piece of information is that the police command officers and fire staff officers will take 12 furlough days, also known as two and a half weeks of additional vacation, if the 29% $40 million tax increase is approved in February. Now let me first address the issue of furlough days in general. They are not true pay cuts. Remember, they are simply paying employees less because employees are working less. What we need from our city employees is not furlough days, but rather true pay cuts, such as the across-the-board 5% pay cuts that Oakland County recently enacted. Here is what Oakland County Executive L. Brooks Patterson said about using furlough days instead of true pay cuts, and I quote, "Furlough days are an absolute confusion to administrate, and it doesn't get you there. You're denying people access to services that they are paying for." Of course, Mr. Patterson, as the chief administrator officer of Oakland County Government, set the example for his entire organization by taking a true 5% pay cut himself. So who is setting the example for the City of Troy as far as taking furlough days instead of true pay cuts? That, of course, would be the city manager, Mr. Zurlag. Mr. Zurlag, whose current city compensation is over $220,000 a year, has refused to take a true pay cut. Instead, he has opted for to take 12 furlough days, also known as two and a half weeks of additional vacation. Now, Mr. Zurlag may prefer six and a half weeks of vacation to run his part-time consulting business, but that desire should not come before the best interest of our city and its residents, who are paying him over $220,000 per year to be our city manager. Now, I have two additional concerns about the inclusion of these possible furlough days on the brochure mailed to residents. First, the city, to my knowledge, has not released any signed agreement with the two unions laying out the specifics of these furlough days. Namely, residents deserve to know that these unions had in writing committed to take these furlough days. Also, residents deserve to know for how long of a period these furlough days would be in effect. Would it just be a token couple of months until the tax increase money begins rolling into the city, or would these furlough days last for a more extended period of time? Now, my final concern about the inclusion of these furlough days on the brochure is that this inclusion makes the brochure blatantly contradictory and disingenuous. Under the yes vote column of the brochure, it states that a yes vote means maintaining full service levels in the police and fire departments. How is this an honest statement when the city is simultaneously telling us that the passage of the 29% $40 million tax increase will result in police officers and firefighters working 12 less days next year? This contradiction must be cleared up. We will have 5% less service from our police officers and firefighters, yet we will maintain a full level of service? This simply doesn't make sense, and the disingenuousness of this contradiction is astounding. To summarize, I am asking city management for answers to two critical questions tonight. First, is there signed documentation between the city and the police and fire unions committing to these furlough days? If so, when will that information be released publicly? Second, how does city management explain the contradiction of the brochure stating that a yes vote on the tax increase will simultaneously result in 5% less service by police officers and firefighters, yet full levels of service will be maintained in the police department and the fire department? I look forward tonight to city management's answers on these two items, and obviously since we are encouraging direct response to public comment at tonight's meeting, I urge the city management to answer these questions immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone that I have missed that wishes to speak on the public comment portion? Yes, sir. Would you like to come forward and give us your name?
Good evening. My name is Bill Redfield. I apologize for my voice in the middle. Nice to see you, Dane. Wade.
Yep.
And Howard-Lack. Gosh, I don't know what to say. This year has been a horrendous year for me. I have had about an 80% reduction in my pay. It's been unbelievable. I can't believe the economy. I work in automotive. I'm not here to cry about that, but what I am here, Mayor, is to find out when this government is going to step up to the plate and be honest with the people. On October 5th, 2009, my friend David Eisenbacher made a statement in that chair at 9:05 Eastern Daylight Time, and you committed with this woman over here, Lori Greg Bloom, to give answers to the public as to why the dollar sign does not appear on the public tax notice, tax notice. Have you gotten that answer yet from her?
The dollar sign? Excuse me. There's a dollar bill I asked about, you know, there's a picture on the tax bill?
I'm talking about on the front page.
Oh, all right.
Of the tax notice.
I can inquire. Go ahead. Is there, we'll inquire.
Can you tell us, can you tell us why that does not exist? And can, I'm asking you, do you know why? Because I know why, but I want to hear from you people.
Do you have any other comments before we ask her?
Can you tell me what the definition of a mill was in 1955?
Pardon?
Do you know what the word mill is?
Yes, I certainly do.
Can you tell me what the definition is of that word, ma'am?
Sir, this is not the time to be cross-examining the city council if you'd like to make your statements.
When is the time, ma'am? I asked this woman last August, and she didn't respond to me. David Eisenbacher asked the public to make, to get an answer on that. She committed to doing it. She still hasn't done it. You said to her, "When are you going to get that man his answer?" And she said, "Soon." Haven't seen it. When's it coming?
When you're finished with your comments, sir, I'll continue on. Do you have any more comments or questions?
Yes, I do have another comment and a question. Is there anybody on this forum here that is not collecting a check from the public trust?
And do you have any other questions, sir?
Yes, I do have one more question. Pursuant to Michigan Piled Law 15.151, are you aware that you are under oath of office if you're collecting from the public trust? In violation of that public trust and a breach of contract punishable by law, imprisonment, are you aware of that?
And any other, sir?
I probably have a couple more, but I think I'll lay off because I put this bomb on you guys right now because this issue regarding the tax increase is a farce, and the people out here on the street are suffering, and you people who are collecting six-digit checks and more are stealing from the people. And the people that are collecting pensions that are being subsidized by the people, usurping private money for the use of the public people that are working under oath, that are breaching their duty of the public trust every day, is abhorrent to every ethic in my bones. I can't believe what's going on around here, and you guys are doing this thing all up here like it's a fiction, and it is a fiction, because you guys are operating in a fiction, standing behind your bonds, and you have absolutely no concept of what's really going on out there. None. This country was founded on faith, ethics, and beliefs, and this country has been ripped off, usurped, raped by the government, the federal government, the United Nations, England, the Vatican, and the Chinese government for hundreds of years, and you guys are doing the wrong thing by perpetrating this fraud and continuing to go forward to try and put forward a tax increase. That man, what's his name? What was that guy's name that was running? The guy with the M that was running? What was his name? Wade? Well, I forget that guy's name. It used to be the commissioner.
Mohna.
Mohna?
Mohna.
Mohna. He comes to my door and says, "Guys, I got him 15 minutes. I could solve this public debt problem in probably four days if I had you people in private conference," because there is no money in the system. We operate on debt and credit. Do you understand that? There is no money. It was taken away from us in 1933.
Mr. Redfield, your time is up, sir.
That's fine, ma'am. I'll come back. Would you please comment on my questions tonight?
Thank you.
And when am I going to see my answers from this lady over here who's been in breach of the public trust?
Sir, you'll have to sit down. Do you still have?
Thank you very much, and I'll have a good holiday. You will be hearing more from me.
Do you still have your, do you have your hat, or did you leave it with your father? Thank you. Is there anyone else who has comments under the public comment section domain?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Beltrameen?
While we're here, why is there no dollar sign on the tax bill?
Mrs. Bloom?
Mayor, I received a pile of information from Mr. Redfield, and frankly, it's just one of those items that has not been a priority. I've not been able to search through all the obscure information that he'd given to me. I do intend to do that. I will intend to do that. I also want to address the statement that I'm in breach of the public trust, and I just want to clarify that I certainly am giving 120% to the City of Troy.
Any other comments from council? Then we'll continue on. Our next order of business is the regular business, the appointments to boards and committees. Our note, council on the table, is the correction, and it's in the agenda too, to the terms that were expired. The dates are corrected there, and so the expiration, I'm going to restate, and that is moved by the chair that we reappoint Michael Hudson to a term expiring December 31st, 2012, Philip Sanzika to a term expiring 12/31/2012, and John J. Tagle to a term expiring 12/31/2012.
Support.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Plata?
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howard-Lack?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
And Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. And our second item is council appointments, building board code of appeals, and the Southeastern Michigan Council of Governments, SAMCOT. Want to move that resolution, Councilwoman?
Resolved that Troy City Council hereby appoints the following persons to serve on the boards and committees as indicated. Board, Building Code Board of Appeals, John Zurlak, City Manager, Michael Power, Oakland County Health Department, and to the Southeastern Michigan Council of Government, SAMCOG, Robin Beltrame, delegate, and Mark F. Futterman-Halton.
Do we have a second? Support. Was that Councilwoman McGinnis?
Yes, it was.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve those appointments and reappointments as read and printed. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Plata?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Howard-Lack?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schelling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrame.
Yes.
Motion passes. And nominations to boards and committees. For Board of Review, I bring forward the name of James Edward Hatch, who is requesting reappointment.
Support.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we reappoint James Edward Hatch to the Board of Review with the term expiring January 31st, 2010, is when it expires.
It'll be 13.
Yes, and so it will be till... I know, I'm looking at the other paper here, when it expires. And now it would expire at, on 2013. Moved by the chair, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Plata?
Councilmember Howard-Lack?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schelling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrame?
Yes.
And Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. And city council nominations, there are some reappointments and then some appointments. Do you wish to take reappointments first? Is that... Are you going to go in order?
Oh, Madam, maybe you don't mind.
Yes.
I'll go in order.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Okay. We have quite a few openings here, but I'd like to bring forward the name on Advisory Committee for Persons with Disabilities. I've talked to several people here, but one person has agreed. That's Leslie Golden, Whit, for term expiring 11/1/2012. Can we do them all at once? I can go with employee retirement, Assistant Board of Trustees, Retiree Healthcare Benefits Plan and Trust, a reappointment of Mark Solis.
Mark Solis.
Solis, yeah. And Liquor Advisory Committee, Andrew Calsumis, reappointment. Municipal Building Authority, reappointment of Thomas G. Sawyer Jr. And that's all I have at this time. I have some other people, other committees, but not ready to bring forward the names yet.
Move by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman Beltrame, that we make those appointments and reappointments. And I need to ask if there are any that council members, in addition, want to bring forward, because remember, any of the council can bring forward names, and I don't know that unless they indicate. Any others? Councilwoman Kerwin?
Did I miss the election commission?
No, we didn't.
Were those...
We're waiting.
Did we get their recommendations yet?
Didn't have that.
No. There's a note here that says Oakland County Democratic Republican Party will notify and forward their recommendations, so we usually wait till we've actually heard from them before we do that one.
And I do see that there are a lot of vacancies on the Advisory Committee for Persons with Disabilities, but as I recall, Leslie Witt serves on two other committees. I could be wrong on that, but that seems like a lot, if it would be possible to see if we could find some other people to serve.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
I've had discussions with two other people. They have not turned in their applications yet. I think prior to our next meeting, I'll have two other application, one, well, two, two applications for sure. I'll bring forward names the next time.
Did you, when you spoke to Mrs. Witt, did she indicate that she could serve on three?
No problem.
Okay. Any other discussion? Then the vote to move those nominations? Mrs. Plata? Do you want me to read them all again?
No, just for the record, Mrs. Witt is only on an ad hoc committee right now with the Historic District Study Committee.
I think she had her name in on another one. That's might be why. Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Plata?
Councilmember Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schelling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrame?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
And Howard-Lack?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes, and we'll go next to H.3, which is the Schedule Contact Reopener for the Detroit Water and Sewage Year Two. Someone want to move a resolution? Yes, Councilwoman Beltrame.
First, I want to make a comment that when we first passed our ordinance requiring particularly underground sprinklers to be run at night, we had lots of complaints, and I have an underground sprinkler. It was kind of a pain to do it, but it saved us collectively half a million dollars, and that's not chump change. And it showed up in all of our bills, and so I'm grateful to Mr. Richneck and Mr. Schepler that you pushed the issue. Thank you. And with that, I would read this resolution. Whereas, in 2008, the city of Troy and the Detroit Water and Sewage Department, DWSD, entered into a 30-year contract to provide wholesale water, which also includes the right of a reopeners of the DWSD commitment and adjusting factors used to develop the water rates charged to the city of Troy. And whereas, after two years of successfully shifting peaks, the city has qualified for reduced fees on the schedules based on the limitations to peak water volumes, and thus resulted in the reopening of the contract for minor clarification of contract language. Therefore, be it resolved that the Detroit City Council hereby approves the attached amendment to the 30-year contract to provide wholesale water between the city of Troy and the Detroit Water and Sewage Department, as recommended by city administration, and hereby authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute the documents, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting. Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrame, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Comments?
Mayor.
Was that Councilwoman Howard-Lack?
Yes.
Yes.
Just a couple of questions for staff, if I may. One is the, just a comment on the flow rates. Is our 2009 versus 2008 versus 2007 total water consumption, is that down?
Mr. Richneck?
Yes. Water consumption in the last three years dropped about 20 percent in the city of Troy, and that's why you see on that chart that our volume that we're contracting for has gone from 630 to 576. And the reason that we want to keep those numbers in line is that they dictate what the rates are, and so that Detroit Water and Sewer can collect sufficient revenue to make sure they pay all the bills across all Southeast Michigan with the 126 customers they have.
And the other question I have is regarding some of these changes that were made in the, I believe it's a master contract with some variations between cities. Is that correct?
Yes.
And one of the concerns that I have, quite frankly, and I had back when we did this initially, was the, just the 30-year lock-in, and it doesn't appear that there's any language loosening that up at all. Is that... Am I mistaken?
I don't quite understand. Loosening up the 30-year commitment?
The ability to back out. The, there are a few things that have changed that I think are probably more beneficial to the communities that requested them. Did the city of Troy make any requests for contract language changes? Because I didn't see that in here.
No, we didn't have any specific changes, but the changes that all the other communities asked for would entitle the city of Troy to those same benefits.
And my understanding is, if we don't approve this, then we're still under the old language. Is that correct?
Basically, yes, that's correct. But I think all of these items that you see there are a benefit to our community. There's nothing that they have that takes more liberties with the city of Troy. They would all be future benefits if we were to run into those situations.
Okay. That sounds fair enough. Okay, thanks so much.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Mrs. Bloom?
Mayor, may I just supplement just a couple of things to address Councilwoman Howard-Lack's questions and concerns. It is a 30-year term, and that is because of the amount of infrastructure that's required, and it required a 30-year commitment to pay for all of the infrastructures for the Detroit Water and Sewer. And as to whether or not the city of Troy did make requested revisions, we did on the original contract. I have reviewed the addendums, the modifications to this contract, and I am satisfied that the city is actually probably in an improved position as a result of these, this amendment.
Councilwoman Kerwin?
I did appreciate all the background detail, including everything to do with water, but I did want to recognize the city attorney, who worked early in a regional effort to come up with the contracts to benefit all of the communities, who before that time did not have this kind of voice nor leverage. So I do appreciate that, and will be supporting the resolution.
Further comments or questions? Mrs. Plata, the vote?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schelling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrame?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howard-Lack?
Yes.
And Kerwin?
Yes.
Motion passes. H.4 is the abolishment of Brownfield Plan Number One for Grand Sacwa Midtown. Move, Councilwoman Kerwin?
Where's Detroit Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, DRAF, adopted resolution number 2009-12-02 that recommends abolishment of Brownfield Plan Number One as amended, Grand Sacwa Midtown. Therefore, be it resolved that Detroit City Council hereby abolishes Brownfield Plan Number One as amended, Grand Sacwa Midtown, as permitted by MCL 125.2666, parentheses two, since the purposes for which the plan were established have been accomplished, and hereby directs the city clerk to forward a certified resolution of abolishment to the state of Michigan.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Kerwin, seconded by Councilwoman Howard-Lack, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Plata?
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schelling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrame?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howard-Lack?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
And McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. H.5 is the deficit elimination plans that each year we submit. Do we have a resolution?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Beltrame?
Resolve that Detroit City Council hereby approves and adopts the Downtown Development Authority Aquatic Center and Sanctuary Lake Golf Course deficit elimination plans presented at this meeting.
Support. Moved by Councilwoman Beltrame, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Plata?
Mayor Schelling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrame?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howard-Lack?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
And Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. H.6, the proposed Detroit City Code Ordinance Amendment, Chapter Three, Administrative Service. This correlates with what Mr. Sevigny said on the first item.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman McGinnis?
Be it resolved that Detroit City Council hereby adopts an ordinance to amend Chapter Three, Administrative Service, as prepared by city administration, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Howard-Lack?
Just to kind of tie the sense of the public hearing before, and I never really followed up to explain my vote, but I'm not, I'm just not entirely certain that I understand the purpose of this, and perhaps it's something that I'll just contact the city manager and get a better understanding of it. But as it stands right now, I'm not in favor of what we're doing, so I'll be voting no on this resolution.
Further discussion? The vote, Mrs. Plata?
Councilmember Beltrame?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howard-Lack?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
And Mayor Schelling?
Yes. Motion passes. Proposed Detroit City, H.7, Proposed Detroit City Code Ordinance, Chapter 102, Cost Recovery. Do we have a resolution?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Slater?
I'll... I'm not going to read it. If I could just...
You can just move it.
Move the resolution as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Slater, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Howard-Lack?
Couple of questions that I think need to be addressed. One is the issue of liens, and it's my understanding, and perhaps I misunderstood, but that we're only referring to liens of property owned in the city of Troy. Is that correct?
Correct.
That seems to be unfortunate and inordinately penalizes the very people that are paying taxes in the city to begin with. You know, somebody who's broke from Louisville, Kentucky, is assessed a fine here, and, or maybe they're not broke at all, but maybe they just don't pay it, and they have property in Kentucky, versus somebody who has a small home in Troy, who is in the same situation. The person who lives in Troy is in, it sounds to me, is in a worse situation. Or, better yet, somebody who is a foreign national, who is assessed a fine in the city of Troy, and maybe they even have bank assets in the United States. It seems to me to be unfair. That's just a comment I wanted to make.
Mrs. Bloom, is that because we're only allowed to assess the lien against folks within our own city? Would you like to explain that a little more?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. And I know Councilwoman Beltrame had brought that up earlier today as well. The ordinance is for extraordinary events. It is not likely that this will be used on a regular basis. It's very likely that this will be very extraordinarily used, very unique situations. It is true that the easiest way of us collecting that is by imposing it on the lien. However, that may also be a benefit to the taxpayers in that they don't have the collection action, and they will have the opportunity to have that paid out of proceeds if they were to sell the property or some other, other way. But as far as collecting it from other persons, there are a number of other opportunities for us to collect. We certainly would be pursuing collection of these extraordinary events from persons outside of the city. But it is something that we do have the ability to do, to place a lien on city-owned property. Having said that, if it's counsel desire, I did indicate last week that this is an informational item. I didn't have any responses until today. However, this is not something that needs to be acted on today. If there's a majority of council that feels that this should be removed, then we certainly would be happy to present something to you with that language changed and modified.
Mayor?
I think Councilwoman Beltrame signaled when then you spoke, so we'll go in that order. Yes.
Question for the attorney. Are we precluded from enforcing our ordinances through a lien on property outside the city?
We don't have the ability to impose a lien on property in other assessing districts.
That was my question. Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Howarlag?
My concern is that, I believe that emergency services are perhaps the most important function of any government that is required to provide them, and since we are the city and the cities in the state of Michigan provide those services, I think it is the most important thing that we do is to protect our citizens. My concern is that this is an area where I think it is inappropriate to assess these sorts of fees unless it's absolutely necessary. And I would suggest that we wait until the outcome of the election to, before proceeding in this direction. I have a number of concerns, and I have had a number of concerns since we started discussing this, I think it was last year. But that would be my take. If you want, I'll give you one additional example of an area where I have concern. It's in, I believe it's two G one, and it says, under the definition of extraordinary response situations, this is definitions, means situations requiring extraordinary response to municipal personnel rendered in response to, and number one says excessive and/or repeated requests for response incidents which are determined by the chief of police or the fire chief to be non-hazardous or non-dangerous to an individual or the public. However, extraordinary response, which is defined in subsection F, which precedes G, says extraordinary response means providing, sending, and/or utilizing emergency or municipal personnel to or at an incident of serious and/or urgent threat to human life, public safety, or welfare, or to real or personal property. So essentially, two G one gives you a dead end, because how can it be non, not dangerous when in fact the definition of, of, the predicate of the def, of the, you have something here that says it is dangerous to begin with, and you conclude with, if it's not dangerous. So that's rather circular. But it can be interpreted to mean, um, believed to be dangerous, but resulted in not being dangerous while the person calling might not even know that. My concern is that you have, say, for example, a situation where there's a, there's an ordinance violation after hours, and there's a, a referral by, by, by staff to the citizen to call the police department. And of course, you know, what's going to happen many a times, and we've been here on the receiving end of these things, where the, the person calls, the police show up, that it's not a problem anymore, and then they go, and it is, and so it's this and that. And, and then one day, this individual who's been calling, after being told that they're going to be assessed, has a real, truly serious situation, a fire, a break-in, a mugging, whatever the case might be, and yet they're concerned about calling the police department. I don't want people to not contact for emergency services because they're scared to pay the assessment. And to be honest with you, if we're going to assess people that are in traffic accidents, nobody in their right mind would call the police department because it's substantially cheaper to pay out to the, whoever is the creative party than it is to get a ticket, to pay a higher insurance rate, and then to be assessed fees by the city. You might as well give the city your automobile.
So, uh, Councilman Howarlag, are you saying that because the description in F one doesn't match up with the things that are in, uh, H? Is that correct?
Oh, I'm just giving, I'm just giving you an example, and I can give you more, but I don't want to hijack a meeting. My, my point is that I don't want people to be penalized for using the services that they're paying their property taxes for. And I think that if you want to go in this direction, the appropriate thing to do is wait for the outcome for, of the mill levy increase request in February, and if it passes, this may be something we want to put on the back burner.
Mrs. Bloom, I don't see that the two are intertwined.
Yeah, Mayor, I would just indicate that, that there are, because we are involved in several other fire cooperatives, this is something that the other fire departments have. It is for extraordinary events. It does not cover the traffic situation. This is only for those incidents where it is, well, again, I use the word extraordinary, but that's really what it's designed for. And as to, I'll do my best to try and address the concern that was just raised tonight at the table. As far as F, two F and two G, two F says extraordinary responses are the sending out of personnel. Two G says that it's the sending out of personnel when it's not required, under one. So it'd be excessive and/or repeated requests when it, when it's not required. That would be something that would be chargeable to the person if it's excessive requests and they are not required. So, so there, in, in my reading of it, there is not a contradiction between F and G. However, again, we don't have a definite timeframe. If there's a majority of this council that does not feel comfortable in proceeding with this ordinance, then certainly we would be happy to bring it back at a later date.
I do note that the Fire Chief Nelson is here. I don't know if anybody wants any explanation, or if we just assume. Mr. Lamarrado, what, what, what do you feel on this? Chief Nelson?
Mayor, members of council, this ordinance basically is designed to protect the citizens of the City of Troy from extraordinary incidents that we've participated in in other communities. We were in Wixom about a year ago for a nitric acid spill that threatened a one-mile downwind area. The business was in Chapter eleven, and we were there for eight hours, and it had already amassed a three hundred thousand dollar bill that the Wixom city manager had to authorize, and there was no recourse for them to be paid for that. So, the bottom line is, is if we don't have a methodology to recoup that money from the person that's responsible for whatever that situation is, then all the citizens pay for it. And they get a larger share of return on their particular tax investment than anybody else does.
Uh, Councilwoman Kerwin?
If I may ask the chief, is that an example of an extraordinary response situation then, chief?
Yes. We actually had three hazmat teams. We had probably seventy-five people there because we had a huge potential for damage and injury to the citizens of that particular community. We have a much larger potential for that in Troy, basically because of the amount of industry that we have. We have a lot of high-tech industry that uses hazardous production materials and things like that. So, we also have the ability, or we've had situations in the past with transportation incidents on I-75. And all of those things result, when we have those, and we're talking typically, we have maybe one or two of these a year, historically.
Okay. And you indicated other cities, was it, Mrs. Bloom, you indicated other cities are, are doing this? This is coordinating with the other cities?
Yes, they are, and Chief Nelson may have a better idea of which cities. I know that Wixom has language that is very similar to this ordinance, and we've used a lot of their language.
We are in a mutual aid agreement with forty-one other municipalities. It is a requirement of that mutual aid agreement that we have a cost recovery ordinance in place. If not, the other folks will be hesitant to come here to help us because there is no certainty that they will be paid unless you want to try to find the money to do that within the City of Troy.
Mayor.
And, uh, Councilman Howarlag?
Uh, yes, chief. Is it, is it true that your department sends emergency response teams to respond to incidents that you don't believe are hazardous or dangerous to the individual or the public?
Well, when you call 911 and report a problem, we respond to that. Now, the specialized teams don't get called until somebody is there and verifies that there's a, an emergency.
So, but thi, this particular ordinance language says that there will be an assessment in response to extraordinary responses that are a result of excessive and/or repeated requests for a response to incidents which are determined by you or your colleague at the police department to be non-hazardous or not dangerous to the individual. That's confusing to me. It seems to me that it implies that if somebody has, you know, pouts and whatever, and insists that they have, you know, all sorts of emergency, specialized emergency teams, that they'll get it, and they'll be built for it even if they don't need it.
Well, we don't spend, send those teams out because those are multi-jurisdictional teams, and when we push the button to send those teams, we're sending people from up to twenty-five or thirty communities to respond to that, and there's, there is cost involved with that. So we don't send those teams on repeated calls. We will have a Troy firefighter, a police officer will be on that scene, and we'll size that scene up and determine whether or not we need the special team. And typically, we now have the ability to call tiers of those teams. We used to call out the whole team. Now we can call one person for the team. We can call twelve people from the team, or we can call more than that if we need to. So it is incremental the way we do it now. But if we're not sure, we can call one person to come and, and provide advice on it before we bring out the whole team. That's for hazardous materials. And there, we have a similar operation for tech rescue, building collapse, cave-in, those types of things as well.
Thank you, chief. Heaven forbid we should have one of these situations while we're waiting to vote on this. I think after the chief's explanation of the fact that we're in this agreement with these other communities, and the number that is there, and the fact that we have someone who will assess it before the special teams go out, answers many of the questions that were asked. I would really like to see it pass this evening, and if we have to make any adaptations to it, what would be the provision for doing that, Mrs. Bloom?
Well, certainly, Mayor. If it, if it is passed tonight, you can always amend your ordinances. Doesn't, you can always amend your ordinances after the fact. So it's, it's certainly if there's something that comes about, if you do pass this this evening, and there is something that in, in practice is not working, or if council wants to tweak it at a later date, you certainly have that opportunity.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Beltramini?
I believe that since we will have Troy Fire Department or Troy Police Department personnel on site before extraordinary measures are put into place, that is reliable to me. And my concern was that we did not have enough ways to recoup our costs. And so as law and practice changes, I would hope that we could add those mechanisms in. But I believe that it is absolutely essential, as communities run leaner and leaner, public safety staffs, to have as many cooperative agreements that will actually work in place. And this is one of the ways to make those agreements work.
Uh, Councilwoman Kerwin?
In your background memo, Ms. Bloom, you described unique incidents and the extraordinary costs, and that's what we're really talking about in this ordinance. Isn't that true?
Yes.
You also said that you worked extensively with police and fire and public works, I believe, in developing this. Is that true?
And the police department as well, yes.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Uh, Mayor Potem Fleming?
Yeah, I think the concern is here that it opens up the potential for abuse, but like Councilwoman Beltramini explained, the fact that our police, fire department are going to be there and make a judgment call, we're not going to use this in every situation, in every case. This is going to be extraordinary, and I, I will vote in favor of this because I'm understanding this as meaning cost recovery only in extraordinary, extraordinary circumstances, and not as a mechanism just to be a revenue generator to try to offset a budget deficit. This is because it's, it's really a serious situation and evaluated. So I can support it with that. If it's just a way to pass cost and recover cost and reduce our budget deficit, I couldn't go along with that at all. But as I'm understanding it, I can, I can support it. But in the event as we go forward, if it's determined that, and we see instances, and this council should know, every time we have a cost recovery, I'd like that brought to the council so that we can know, and we can see, and we can report on it, so that we know when that, when that mechanism is being triggered. Then we could maybe make sure that there's, it's never being abused. Not, not that I think it will, but I would just like to see council made aware, every time there is a cost recovery, have a report on that.
I'm sure that since this is so extraordinary, that we, they would be letting us know, because many times we get notified of things that aren't even of this magnitude. But I think it's important to have this in place and to be working with the other communities for just such a, a current, should it happen. Okay. Are you ready for the vote? No? Uh, Councilman Howarlag?
Yeah, just one final comment. The, I, I guess it probably boils down to my belief that the language needs to be tightened up. I believe the language is to lose. And I believe that the chief's intent and the language don't match up. I believe that if what the chief says and what Councilman Fleming say, I'm in total agreement with as well. There clearly needs to be cost recovery for things like hazardous materials cleanup, bomb threats, that sort of thing. But the, you know, the definition itself of extraordinary response and the rest of this ordinance is such that this could be used ten, twenty times a day, not once or twice a year, because it makes references to providing, sending, and/or utilizing emergency or municipal personnel at an incident or of a serious and/or urgent threat to human life, public safety, or welfare, or to real or personal property. And, you know, say for example, if you have an automobile accident and a gas tank is punctured, if there's an automobile accident, you're sitting in the middle of the road, there are all sorts of situations that happen on a daily basis that if you read the rest of this ordinance and compare what it is prescribing to the definitions of, of, of how it is prescribing that, then this language is, is, is not, it's not what we're looking for. So, anyway, I don't want to belabor this. I will simply vote no.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Palata, the vote?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Howarlag?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schelling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Motion passes. Eight, H eight is the request from Eminem Troy for a new SDM license with gas pumps to be located at sixteen thirty-four John R. MLCC request four three eight two oh two.
Madam Mayor.
Uh, Councilwoman Kerwin?
Resolve that Troy City Council hereby considers for approval the request from Eminem Troy Incorporated for a new SDM license with gas pumps to be located at sixteen thirty-four John R. Troy, Michigan, four eight oh eight three, Oakland County, MLCC request number four three eight two oh two, above all others, and be it further resolved that it is the consensus of the legislative body that the application be recommended above all others for issuance.
And you wish to do the agreement too, at the same time?
I do. Whereas the Troy City Council deems it necessary to enter agreements with applicants for liquor licenses for the purpose of providing civil remedies to the City of Troy in the event licensees fail to adhere to Troy codes and ordinances, therefore be it resolved, the Troy City Council hereby approves an agreement with Eminem Troy Incorporated for a new SDM license with gas pumps to be located at sixteen thirty-four John R. Troy, Michigan, four eight oh eight three, Oakland County, MLCC request number four three eight two oh two, and hereby authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute the document, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Kerwin, seconded by Councilman Slater, that we approve A and B as printed and read. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Palata?
Councilmember Howarlag?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schelling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
And Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, consent agenda. Uh, does any, council have any items they wish exempted? Uh, I note that the council minutes- wish exempted? Uh, I note that the council minutes should read as amended. We approve the minutes as amended. Any other items, one of?
Mayor?
Uh, Councilman Howarak?
I-2 and I-9.
I-2 and I-9. Okay. Any others? Okay. Do we have a resolution then for all the consent items except for I-2 and I-9?
Mayor?
Uh, Mayor Potem Fleming?
Resolve that all items as presented on the consent agenda are hereby approved as presented with the exception of items I-2 and I-9 that shall be considered after consent agenda item as printed.
Second.
Moved by, uh, Councilwoman Fleming, uh, Mayor Potem Fleming, uh, seconded by Councilwoman Beltrame, that we approve all the consent agenda items, including the minutes as amended, uh, except I-2 and I-9 that'll be considered after this item. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Plata?
Councilmember Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schelling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrame?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
And Howarak?
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, Councilwoman Howarak, you wanted I-2 and I-9?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, regarding I-2, um, my, you know, I've actually always been uncomfortable with, um, requiring, um, staff to excerpt what people say, either during council comments or during public comment. And the, um, the changes, I, I think, in the draft council minutes go from probably being pretty close to what they say. I'm guessing you folks probably listened to the tapes extensively, to being problematic. I would rather just say, you know, if we're, if we're gonna, if we're gonna go for excerpts and truly excerpt it, have the person have the subject, leave it at that. Somebody wants to find out what the person said, then go to the record. And we have all this stuff posted on the internet. It's in the library. You can watch the video on, on the internet. You can watch it in the library. You can take it home with you, check it out. Um, but I think it, it's, especially with public comment, it's way too problematic to request staff to accurately trans, transcribe what individuals are saying. I'd rather just have, um, David Ashland commented about the informational brochure, Audrey Zabruski commented about the proposed, uh, mill levy increase. Um, for example, we have Audrey Zabruski, originally we have, um, C1, B, C, and D, thought the finance presentation was good. H7 interested in knowing about how the proposed millage is going to be presented and impact, excuse me, presented, because there are a lot of new voters who just became registered voters, and they're receiving a lot of information, misinformation at school. That was replaced with interested in knowing how the proposed millage is going to be presented and impact on new student voters. I, just say that she commented on the mill levy and, and the, um, election and the, um, the information over a short, and that's fine, because I think that, um, those are two completely different, um, representations of what happened at that meeting. And I don't want to get, I don't think we're in a business to do that. We need to have, you know, council speaks through its resolutions, and, and the public comment, I think, you know, it's, it's sufficient to know what they commented on as far as how they commented on it. It, it just becomes way too political.
Uh, Councilman Howarak, I'm glad that you brought that up because that was actually the intent, is to have the name of the person and the item that they spoke on. And I thought that's what we'd agreed to on the council, uh, as a body. And then I saw the minutes had more elaboration. Uh, and, uh, to further comment on that, each time that we vote on something or make a comment on something in the minutes, it doesn't have all of our information there because that's what minutes are not supposed to be. They're supposed to be the brief, you know, actually the resolutions. As you rightly said, we speak through our resolutions. And, uh, so I think that, uh, that's appropriate. And could we request that, that, um, that be the appropriate thing for our minutes?
Yes.
Okay. So, for tonight's, uh, meeting, yes, Miss, Mrs. Plata?
Would you like them postponed so we can present them at the next meeting for approval?
Yes.
Yes.
We can, yes. If you, or we could say with, with the change, uh, with the name and just the, the item, um, after it.
Can you read?
I'm seeing varying degrees of signaling from the table, so, uh, with council's pleasure. Do you want to have them postponed, or you want to just have it go to the other way? Council, uh, Councilwoman Kerwin?
Just a question for, um, the city attorney. Is there anything in the minutes that would need to be done before we meet again?
Um, I, I meant, um, bring up another point as well. Um, no, there, I don't think that there's anything that, uh, we'd need to get approval of the minutes, uh, on. However, there are requirements for approving minutes within a certain amount of time under the Open Meetings Act. So, if there is the ability to do that, I would recommend that you do approve them with those corrections at tonight's meeting so that we're compliant with the Open Meetings Act provisions.
Why don't we do that so we don't run into a problem? We approve them with the change of just the, the name of the individual and then the item that they, um, spoke about, correct? Okay. And then I-9, uh, Councilwoman Howarak, you have?
Oh, we did.
Do we need a vote?
Yes.
Oh, we don't want to vote on I-2 and I-9 at the same time? Okay. How, uh, the vote then, Mrs. Plata?
We need a, a resolution moved.
Madam Mayor?
Uh, Councilwoman Beltrame?
Resolve that Detroit City Council hereby approves the minutes of the September, 7:30 PM regular city council meeting of December 7th, 2009, with the public comment section being changed to annotate the speaker and the subject only.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrame, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve that resolution. Discussion? Vote, Mrs. Plata?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schelling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrame?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howarak?
Yeah.
And Kerwin?
Yes.
And I-9, Councilwoman Howarak?
Um, well, I'll, I'll move the resolution, by the way, and then I'll comment.
All right. Uh, do we have a second?
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Howarak, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we approve resolution of I-9. Discussion? Councilwoman Howarak?
Thank you. I just wanted to comment that, um, you know, if, if possible, I would like to, uh, discuss this in closed session at the next meeting, um, to see if there can be some expeditious resolution of this matter.
Uh, Mayor, we, I certainly can, can bring it back. Um, I'd like the opportunity to provide more details to you without, uh, invading the privacy of, of the individual. Um, however, it may be set, um, such a fast track that it may actually be resolved prior to that time. So, certainly I will give you more information if that's what council desires.
The, Councilwoman Howarak, you want to add it to, we have a closed session tonight. You want to add it to the closed session tonight in case there's any...
Mayor, this time, Mayor, this time, um, you know, I, I guess I, I'm more comfortable, I don't think there's any, I don't think it's that urgent. And as the city attorney alluded to, it may resolve itself in the next two weeks.
Okay.
Um, it may simply require an additional memo. I just want some more information on it, that's all.
Okay. Thank you. So, uh, the item is before us. Just, I, further discussion? The vote, Mrs. Plata?
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schelling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrame?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howarak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
And McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, uh, council, um, referrals, council comments, um, I didn't have a chance
at the Thanksgiving meeting to say, because I was so busy moving on, uh, that I would like to, uh, express on behalf of the council, and certainly any council members can express for themselves, in addition, that we wish everyone a happy holidays and a Merry Christmas and a safe and healthy, happy new year, uh, from all of us. And are there other council comments that wanted to come forward this evening?
Madam Mayor?
Uh, Councilwoman Kerwin?
Just really wanted to remark on the, um, great generosity of the employees. I think we saw that with the check for Toys for Tots, but also with police and fire, um, many of our, uh, other employees working together to provide, um, both toys for, uh, children in need and also clothing and foodstuffs at this time. Also applaud Troy People Concern working now year-round to help people out, but especially at this time of year. So, appreciate that.
Mm-hmm. Others? Um, Mayor Potem Fleming?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Um, the first speaker tonight in public comment, I think, uh, has me thinking, and I think basically challenged this city council, you know, to either sign that what we're going to do, say we're going to do in this brochure, we're actually doing. And just in this last few minutes, we've said that the only way that we really speak, we may elaborate and talk a lot, but it's through resolutions. I would not sign any document that says I will do exactly what this informational brochure we're printing and sending to all the public says we'll do, what a yes vote means and what a no vote means. I would not sign that as a councilperson, because I think, as the first speaker alluded to, there, there are other alternatives. And I don't know if the other council members would, would do it or not, but, uh, I for one cannot. So, the only way we really legitimately speak is the council is still resolutions. So, I'm going to propose a resolution. I don't know where it'll go, but my resolution is that we remove from this brochure that we're printing, I know we're getting far down the road, the language that states what a yes vote means and what a no vote means, because I'm not prepared as a councilperson to, and there are questions here, to live by this brochure. So, I move that as a resolution.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Howarak?
Um, I, I'm willing to discuss the matter, but I think what we need to do first is to suspend the rules of procedure.
Okay.
Um, and that is what the motion is that I will put forward, is to suspend the rules of procedure.
I just want to interject that the final draft already went to the printer and it's been signed off on.
That's fine. That's okay. Anyway, I will, uh, move to, uh, suspend the rules of procedures that we can have an additional motion on the table.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Howarak, seconded by Mayor Potem Fleming, that we, uh, change the, um, move to, change the, amend the rules of procedure?
Substitute.
Substitute, excuse me. Discussion? The vote to, uh, sp, uh, suspend the rules?
Mayor Schelling?
No.
Councilmember Beltrame?
No.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Howarak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
No.
McGinnis?
No.
And Slater?
No.
Motion fails.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, uh, Councilwoman Beltrame?
I, I think it's most important that I clarify, that I voted no, because there is no way to change that brochure at this point. So, while Councilman Fleming's motive may have been noble, the train is out of the station. So, that's not something we could do.
And, and that was my reasoning too. Uh, usually I, uh, go along with people when they want to, uh, amend the rules and, um, have a discussion, but I, I really didn't see that it was going to be, uh, of any, uh...
Mayor?
...outcome this time, so. Yes, uh, Councilwoman Howarak?
Uh, actually, you know, that wasn't necessarily going to, you know, I, I don't know where that would have gone, but it certainly wasn't going to be the, uh, didn't have to be the final resolution on the table. Um, you know, we, we probably prefer at the council table to put forward resolutions that are actually going to have some sort of a meaning to it. And, you know, there are other things that the, uh, the city has the ability to do. For example, we have a lot of public buildings, including the library and the community center, and, and for example, photocopying, um, additional, um, information for the voters and putting them in the racks of those buildings and certainly within order. And furthermore, we have this, uh, this great website, and we certainly have the ability to amend or add any additional information to that website as well. And so, those are the things that I think that would have been proactive, that I would have preferred to address, um, once we got into kind of the meat of where Councilman Fleming intended to go with his resolution.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor?
Uh, Councilman Slater?
Uh, I agree, um, that, uh, that that can be done. I know it's being done. If you go on the website, um, I'm, I'm in favor of providing every bit of information that the citizens need to make this decision. Uh, the brochure is certainly not the only thing out there. We have a website. There's going to be additional information put on there all the time. Um, they can educate themselves very simply.
Uh, yes, Councilman Howarak?
What I'm looking for is, is what I would consider to be, uh, the ability of our, of our residents to be presented with an apples-to-apples approach. And I think it requires information presented by the city that doesn't currently exist in any format whatsoever, or if it is, it is, it is subordinate and in the back of other information. For example, um, you know, I want, if this thing is going to pass, I want it to be passed because people have the same amount of knowledge about the matters, uh, of the city as the rest of us up here. And I think we have that obligation to convey as much of that as possible. It doesn't do anybody any good whatsoever, for example, to com, to compare their 2010 tax bill after the ta, proposed tax increase to their current 2009 tax bill. I think that's exceptionally disingenuous. And, you know, if people are willing to have a 1.9 mil tax increase, they're going to go and they're going to multiply 1.9 by one thousandth of their taxable value, which is how, you know, which is exactly how the calculation works. It's, it's 1 mil per thousand of taxable value multiplied by 1.9. And they're not going to come to the same answer because their taxable value is, is going to be different from 2010 versus 2009. And you run the risk of the citizens no longer believing anything else that's being presented in there because you're, you're comparing an apple to a turnip, and it doesn't serve anybody's purpose.
Further items? Uh, yes, Councilwoman Beltrame?
Along that line, and I agree. It seems to me, and Mr. Lomorato is there, but we did talk about having some kind of a calculator function that people could access, and we're looking into that? Is that where that stands right now?
Mr. Lomorato?
Uh, Mayor and City Council, what we were going to do is, uh, provide actual photos of several different valued homes in Troy, their 2009 assessed value, what these adjustment would be for 2010, show what their current tax rate is and what their new tax rate would be with the 1.90 mils.
Thank you. So, there will be a...
As one, as one item. On, it'll be on the website, and it's one, one other measure we were going to put out there.
There will be a variety then, and, and that will give people a handle on how to compute their own, so.
Right.
Thank you. I do have one other comment.
Yes, uh, Councilwoman Beltrame?
I received an email from what I believe is a resident of Troy not too long ago as we were having this whole discussion that said, "Well, maybe we need to lay off some police officers. We've got too many anyway." And I'd not ever heard that from anybody. So, I did a little research. The average city in the country has 22.9 sworn officers for every 10,000 people in their town. The state of Michigan, cities and villages have 18.6 sworn officers for every 10,000 people in their town. The city of Troy, one of the safest cities in Michigan, has 15.8 sworn officers for every 10,000 people in the city of Troy. That's a full third below the national average, and yet we rank always among the top 50 cities in the nation. So, I think our police department should be commended for their efficiency and the safety they provide. That's a full third below the national average, and yet we rank always among the top 50 cities in the nation. So I think our police department should be commended for their efficiency and the safety they provide.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilman Howarak?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on something Mr. Lamorato said. Is it my understanding that this calculator is going to show an individual property owner in the city what their taxes are next year with or without a yes vote in February?
Mayor and city council?
Yes, Mr. Lamorato?
What it will show is the 2009 taxes for that property, what the average residential reduction taxable value would be, and then it would show what the taxes would be with and before and after the millage.
So they'll be able to see basically what we might call a forgone decrease in their municipal levy?
There is, yes.
Yeah. That's what it is. I mean, because if it drops 15% or increases 20%, they have a teeny increase, then that's what it is.
Well, that's probably impossible to happen, because the city of Troy's is a small portion of the tax bill.
Right.
And there will be a reduction in their taxes regardless of this millage passes or not. So it will be, there is a reduction in their taxes.
So, okay, I understand. So you're saying it's their overall tax bill?
Their overall tax bill will go down next year.
Right, I understand that. I would actually like to see, you know, if we're going down that road, it certainly would be nice for them to see their municipal tax bill. And since, you know, we like to mention about how we're just a small piece there, and certainly most of us, when we go door to door, we get an earful, and then we inform them that we don't have anything to do with, you know, 78% of your tax bill, then that kind of calms things down a little bit. I would like to see if it's possible, and if we're gonna spend the time to do this, it seems like it would be certainly helpful to show that, you know, remind them again that we're only talking about the city part of the tax bill, that way they can see what the city taxes are with or without the tax increase.
Mayor and city council, I believe that information, that calculation is in the informational brochure, what the city portion of the millage rate would, what would happen with that. But we are having, we've been continuously working on, and I believe by tomorrow, there's, we came up with several other frequently asked questions that we'll be adding to the website, which gives more explanation on all various components with all the questions that we've been hearing and answers to those.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman McGinnis?
If I can just point something out, I do believe that that was a change that was made from the original draft of the brochure that we received, that they added that informational piece that's pointed out, it was going to be affecting your city tax bill as well. There were also some changes that were made from the original draft, that I think perhaps some other people that had attended the last meeting when we discussed the brochure may not have noticed, but there were several changes that were made between the draft that we originally saw and the one that was ultimately approved, and I think that those changes are important, actually, to note.
Okay. Folks, we have a closed session. Here, someone want to move that resolution?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Beltramini?
Be it resolved that the Troy City Council shall meet in closed session as permitted by MCL 15.268E pending litigation, city of Troy, Susan Sandelman, trustee for Esther Jeffrey Trust. Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltramini, seconded by Councilwoman Kirwin, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Palata?
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howarak?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
And Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Therefore, we're in recess, and we convene in the other room.